Thank you, good evening. We are here to continue with our budget review, town council budget review. It is Monday, April 2nd, and tonight's item on the agenda is Board of Education Budget Account 1080. And we have with us, I believe, the full complement of the Board. Yes, you do. Wonderful. We need to make sure that we are passing the mic, please, when we speak. That way, everything is captured. Even though you may be able to hear each other in the room, we want to make sure that the public, our constituents, can also hear, and they're not going to be able to do that unless you're speaking into a microphone. So please pass the microphone to your counterparts who are speaking. All right. So, Dr. Grunier, would you like to present your budget, please?
I would be happy to. The budget document that-
Can you pull the microphone closer, please, so it sounds funny when you're talking?
The budget document that I hope everyone received is actually similar to those documents that were provided in the past, and, of course, in accordance with the town charter. So if you turn to page 2-2, I'll see if I can orient you maybe to this document, and then a number of people have sent me some questions, and so hopefully some of which I got 10 minutes ago, so they're not thoroughly prepared. And some I got a couple days ago, and they are prepared, and we can get those answers to the councilors in good time. But anyway, so page 2-2 is a kind of an object code summary that I always like to go to the final line, which is line 58, the grand total. So our budget right now is in that middle column FY '18 budget, is $76,468,239. That was last year's budget. That's this year's and this year's budget, FY '18 budget. And so as the Board went through the process, we identified the need for a budget of $78, 317,747,000, which is a $1,849,508 increase, or a total increase of 2.4 percent. So if you go back up to the yellow categories on the left-hand side of the page, the first category are salaries, the 100 series, and the total for all of the salary increases, contractual increases, is 1.1 percent. The big item, as I mentioned the other night at the public hearing, is the health insurance account, which has gone up considerably, mostly because of two factors. One is, of course, our claims experience that Anthem Blue Cross projects for us, and a factor that we have not previously budgeted for but are budgeting for now is the other post-employment benefits. And so that's 1.1. So the increase there, you can see, is a little bit over $2 million. It's $1 million in claims experience, and it's a little bit more than $1 million in other post-employment benefits. So that is, of course, the huge increase. That's the $2,342,758 increase. The next category are purchased services. That is to say, services that we not -- services that the school district hires people to provide, everything from professional development services to legal services, computer services, physicians who provide the professional services evaluations, that sort of thing. The next one are property services, or the lion's share of which is maintenance, maintenance repair, the 400 series. We have a little bit of rental, primarily photocopy equipment. We pay for sewer and water, and we pay for trash and snow removal. And so all those accounts you can see are down by 13 percent. The next category is the 500 series, and that is kind of a catch-all, frankly. It includes transportation. And so if you look at line 27, you'll see that we pay a significant amount of money for the transportation services, in fact, $4.7 million worth. That includes the buses, the 47 buses that we have that transport the children back and forth to school in town, and it includes about $1 million for services that we get through the curtain livery service that takes children out of town when they go to other educational facilities. A little bit of, you can see, athletic field trips, professional development, those sorts of activities are, actually, almost all the services are down, including the tuition amounts. And I'll spend a little bit of time in a minute, because it's $5.8 million that the town pays, a very large tuition, mostly special education, but nevertheless, it's a large amount. It's going down a little bit, but tuition is a big factor. And then supplies. You'll notice that supplies are down. Generally speaking, the Board approved my recommendation for a 25 percent reduction in the site budgets. Each school, each elementary school gets about $50,000 to run the school, and so we cut that amount. So you see, there's a, overall, there's a 15 percent reduction in those supplies. The equipment is way down. We were able to use some of the $1.5 million that was restored to purchase equipment this year, so we took it out of next year. So there's only, out of a budget of $78 million, there's only $86,000 worth of equipment. And then you'll notice the last one are dues, and the big reduction that the Board took was to no longer participate in the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, which is about a $20,000 dues bill. So that accounts for the 2.4 million, but that is just a summary. And some of those accounts, as you can see, if you look at line 1, it includes count 105, 106, and 107. So for a non-summarized view, you can go to page 2.3, where you will see the administrators, principals, assistant principals, dean. Administrators meaning the central office, superintendent, assistant superintendent, director of buildings and grounds, HR director, and that sort of thing. And you can see all the teachers, special ed teachers, media specialists, guidance councilors, all the various certified personnel that we have. That's line 64 to 73. When, you'll notice on line 74, this was one of Rita's questions, Rita Schmidt's questions, there is a $540,000 reduction. That's because when retired teachers, we have 18 retired, when top-step retired teachers leave the system, we typically hire lower-step, less costly. It's about a 30,000, 3-0, about a $30,000 swing. So 18 times 30 is 540. So that's how that aspect of the budget is reduced. The non-certified PARS, this is a, this is an account that has been, this is my fifth year, and it's been pretty drastically underfunded almost the entire time I've been here. But we have, we've really stabilized the account, and it, but it does have, as you can see, a 7.5 percent increase. Mostly, if you look at line 79, special education PARS, or what we call paraprofessional 2, those are the PARS that have traditionally been quite underfunded, and so we put in an additional $193,000. That funds all the PARS that we actually have. Substitute account is, as you can imagine, the funds that we use to pay for day-by-day substitutes. It also pays for maternity leaves. So when teachers go out on maternity leave, we hire a substitute, or any medical leave. But anyway, that account pays for both the daily and the long-term substitutes. We have clerical account, you can see there, which has been decreased by 23,000. Custodial maintenance, you see, the total of custodial maintenance salaries, it comes to 2.7, which is $2.7 million. It's about $115,000 a dollar reduction. We've been able to reduce overtime, reduce part-time, and so forth. Now, here comes the tricky part. You know what? Maybe I'll pause right there, because I don't want to, I don't want to, I'll keep going if you want me to keep going.
Yes, please.
Okay. So, as my mother would say, here is the piece de resistance. We have, this year, you look at the middle column, line 95, we have $6.3 million. The Board, the Board put into the health insurance account, has put in $6.3 million. We take that, plus $2 million from the active employees, employees that pay anywhere from 15 to 20 percent, depending upon their union, and we take, we have retired teachers and others who are not eligible for Medicare, and so they pay 100 percent of the COBRA amount. So we pick up about $1.5 million in that way. Thank you, Andrea. And so 6.3 typically was sufficient, because you can see in the years past, 6.4, 6.3, 6.3. Now it jumps to $8,210,000. That is the reflection, the 1.658 million, is a reflection of, Anthem Blue Cross gave us a projection of about $1 million, and the other post-employment benefits have gone up significantly. And because of the accounting measures, and thanks to John Burt and Cindy Landry kind of walking us through, and Joel Zagami walking us through the post-employment benefit package, the Board realized that its actuarial liability is about 1.1 million. So the Board put the whole 1.1 million in there, although the actual claims, projected actual claims, is 786,000. So there's a good amount of money in there, and the Board wanted to be secure about that. Line 96 is actually the health insurance benefits for non-certified folks, and if you hop down to line 98, there's $174,000 workers' comp. That's an actual bill that we paid. Our workers' comp payments went up by 175,000. The town pension, again, that's a bill that we received from the town for the Board's contribution to the custodians and secretaries and so forth, who participated in the pension. So that was a pretty big increase, a 42, 42 and 1/2 percent increase. Social Security and so forth, you can see that's for the non-certified staff that we have working, and then the other unemployment and so forth. So I'm going to keep going. Professional services, line 121, athletic officials, that is a reflection of actual experience. Last year was 57.1. We anticipate this year to be 58.5, and next year it'd be 69.50. It's actually partly a reflection of home games versus away games, a little bit higher in one year. Line 112? Oh, page 2-4. So instructional services, 321 and 323 are services that we, you know, I have a little cheat sheet here. 331 are services that we purchase, like professional development. We invite folks to come in and provide professional development services for our staff. Improvement of instruction is a similar account. I'm going to have to, I have it right in front of me, I'm going to have to dig through, I'll just put a little question mark there, I'll come back to that. Legal services, 85, we, a year ago, we paid $58,000 for legal services. The legal services are a result of two things. One is professional development, excuse me, special education services, consulting services for special education cases, and for contractual negotiations. And this year, we have the big one, this August will be the negotiations with the teachers, which usually is relatively involved and has lots of legal implications and financial implications. Computer services, you see, is, that is a bit of a misnomer. You see line 119, computer network services. That is, it is a $51,000 increase, but you'll see other areas for computers are significantly down. This is for our network services, CEN, and our infrastructure, which we are adding, we have added one-to-one initiative at the high school. We have added dozens of computers to the elementary schools. All the computer, all the statewide testing, including today's science test, ASPAC test, is all done on computers. And when they, basically, when they all go on at the same time, it puts a real stress on the system, and we have to sort of upgrade our routers and hubs and switches and so forth. OTPT is, of course, occupational physical therapy. Those are services that we contract for. We hire consultants, we hire occupational and physical therapists. Professional services, 331, again, I'm going to have to go to my cheat sheet, which...
Are you on line 122?
121, right. Professional services? Oh, like psych evals and stuff like that. Okay, thank you.
Which line is that, Dr. Grunier?
121.
Thank you.
And again, that is a reflection of actuals, that we don't really project. We just try to put in what the actual account is. And other professional services, I think that is partly Project O and... You know, one of the things you want to remember is, don't let your business manager go on vacation when this thing is, I'll come back to that in a minute. So anyway, water and sewer, you see the account there, trash removal, snow removal. You notice the snow removal, two years ago, was 51,146. This year, we're projecting it to be 9,500, and next year, we're, yes?
Could you?
Yep.
Can I get to a mic?
Can you, Mr. Whitelove? Oh, I think you're going to have to take that out of there.
I can get really loud.
It's for the, it's for the-
But I think they can probably hear it.
No, they can't.
All right.
Lee?
All right.
Lee, can you pass that to Joe?
Why don't we just keep that one at that end of the table? That way, it's easier for you guys.
Going back to 121 and 122, there's professional services, and then other professional services that, why do we have two categories of professional services?
I think one is medical professional services that were provided to special education children, and the other professional services, I have to, I apologize, I don't have that with me right now, but I'll look it up once we have a minute.
Thank you.
Sue, do me a favor, keep writing down what I need to look up. Okay. So water and sewers, well, like I say, snow removal. I'm not sure what next year's, the snow removal is going to be. Maybe it will go back to $50,000, or maybe it'd be $90,000. Repair and maintenance, all these 400s here, so the 430 is equipment repair, everything from boilers, I have to bring up a sore subject for Mr. Kilpatrick, we're in the middle of fixing a $37,000, 10-year-old boiler at Northeast Academy that's troublesome, because it's, we have boilers that are 70 years old, and they didn't leak, and this one leaked. But anyway, it's for the repair of equipment. That's a slight increase there. Repair of grounds, that is actually maintaining the football, baseball field, and mowing of the lawns and so forth. General building repairs, again, it's a general account, and although it is down by 35 percent, because we made a decision to try to be as frugal as possible here, you know, one account could bleed over to the other account, because we're never 100 percent sure, of course, what the repair is going to be for next year. Painting, this is the actual work done for painting, and heating, and plumbing, and electrical, and so forth. So the whole account is down, as I said, by 20 percent. The rental, the rental equipment includes photocopy machines, it actually includes portable bathrooms for football games, that sort of thing. And I think it includes the pool, if I'm not mistaken, Avery Point Pool. Yes?
Yeah, I'm curious about the other professional services. That would be number 138.
I'm going to, 449, I'll get to that. Sue, right there. Okay. So on to transportation. The STA, Student Transportation of America, we have a contract with them. We've settled for 2 percent, and that contract, the STA contract, is for $2,886,000. The STA, special education, those are the small vans. The big ones, the big buses that you see, that's for regular education children. The smaller, well, they're not really vans, they're sort of like half buses. That's the $962,000. And then the $873,000 is the curtain transportation, sometimes vans, sometimes individual cars that transport the children. So that's that 4.7 million transportation that I mentioned. Tuition account, this is, the first account on line 147 is special education vocational. That is the money that we spend for the 18- to 21-year-olds who do two things. They participate in a vocational academy that we have, transition academy that we have in the central office. It's kind of like life skills, cooking, and that sort of thing. And they go with coaches to job sites. These are severely disabled young adults, 18- to 21-year-olds, and that, you can see the account used to be 501, and now we've, now that we moved into central office, bless you, it's 4,000. The next two accounts are a little bit arbitrary in my mind, because they're really the same source. 562, which is on line 148, is the amount of money that we pay, the tuition money we pay, when our schools don't have a program, special education program, for a child. So for example, we send children to the American School for the deaf. We don't have a total immersion deaf program here, so while we do have some children who are deaf and participate in our classes, other children, well, their parents opt to go to West Hartford. We have children who go to Bradley School in Providence. We have children go to Newington. So there are, that is the so-called special education outplacement. The next line down is very similar, line 149, that is the 597,000. That is the amount of money that we have to pay when state agencies place a child. So for example, a special education child from Groton who's placed in a foster home outside of Groton, Groton Board of Ed has to pay the tuition for that child. Children who are incarcerated, we have to pay for the education for those children. So I think of those two accounts, if you add the 2.1 million and the 597, so that's about $2.8 million that the Board is responsible for, for the education of those children. And of course, it's a give-and-take situation. Students come back, we work hard to try to have them come back and participate in our regular, in our regular programs, or our special ed programs, and then, of course, children come. And this is the most volatile account in the whole budget, because when a child comes, like if a child arrived today, we would have to provide that special education service immediately, and it very well may mean, it's not at all unlikely to have 150, 160,000 placement, which includes sometimes a parent to travel with the child, a car or van to take the child, and then the tuition. Actually, the tuition for the education is usually a minor amount. It's usually the transportation and special education services that go with it. The next line is adult ed. No? Yes, it is, 210,000. That is, that is for our adult education and high school completion program. We actually participate in the New London Adult Ed Program. It's really a robust program. The Board must provide an adult ed program, or contract out, and that's what we do. It is housed at West Side Middle School, but it is New London, essentially, New London's program. Magnet school tuition, this is line 151, this is the amount of tuition that we pay for regular education children to go to local magnet schools, to go to regional multicultural magnet school, Lurin has a few. Lurin has a few. Marine Science, Dual Language Academy, Three Rivers Middle College. And New London, as you probably know, has become the only all-magnet district in the state. So, 100% of the New London public schools are magnet. And what that means is any children from any neighboring communities can go to New London. We pay a tuition. And we... And the state pays about $8,500 per child. But our share of that is 1.1 million for the regular education children. The vocational agriculture, regular ed tuition is the amount of money, it's $9,000, that the board pays for children to participate in the Ledger Volag Program. So, if they're accepted by law, we must pay the tuition for those children. About 30 students attend Ledger High School. And then, this is... Bless you. This is the other problematic part of magnet school choice. And that is when a child goes to New London or Lurin... I guess that went to... That's Lurin. When they get there, we also have to pay for the education services for Special Education. So, you notice the tuition is 1.1 million and Special Education Services for kids who go to those schools is 1.2. So, you sometimes hear me refer to the 2.3, 2.4 million dollars that we pay for children to go to choice schools. And that's what I'm referring to, Special Education and Regular Education. The next categories are athletic field trips and regular field trips, academic field trips. The other accounts are travel, regular education. Now, this is for... Line 159 would be for Special Education travel. This would be reimbursements for personnel traveling to these sites. We have itinerant teachers. Travel for the administration is partly reimbursement for travel around the district for those folks who have district-wide duties but are not given a district vehicle. It also is a five... Let me see if I can... That is also for travel for conferences and those sorts of professional development experiences. Maintenance. We have maintenance workers, again, who don't have vehicles, some. And we provide travel reimbursements, the director, for example. And then, we have a conference account. This is the amount of money that 536 is for teachers, principals, to attend conferences, professional conferences. Still with the 500 account, dues, entry, mostly athletic entry fees. In some cases, it's entry fees to museums and that sort of thing for field trips. And that whole account is actually down by 12%. A very small amount of money for printing. We... You notice, we only have $6,000 for printing. We don't print very many things on paper. We... In terms of our documents, we like the school newspaper, for example, and parent newsletters are all online. School publications, again, it's $14,000. There are publications at the high school, Enfora, for example, that does get printed. The advertising budget is down. We actually used some alliance money to help us with this, at least for a year. Minority recruiting, we're part of a consortium to help us on minority recruiting. So, instead of having additional money in that, we've joined the consortium. Liability insurance and accident insurance, you see, is down slightly, actually, pretty flat. Telephone, our telephone system and our postage system, our metering system, again, that's down by about $67,000. The next series is the 600, which incorporates a lot. So, let me see if I can break it up for you. The first group there, from 180 to 185, are maintenance supplies. So, this is not the fixing of the equipment. These are the supplies for fixing the equipment. So, equipment repair, general repair, painting, this would be the paint. Heating, electrical, safety supplies like fire extinguisher stuff, recharging fire extinguishers. Transportation. We pay for the diesel for the buses. And we pay for gas for our maintenance vehicles. Actually, pump it from the town, pump near the police station. Do we get the gas there or do we have gas? Where's the diesel?
Gas and gasoline.
Oh, both at the station. Okay. Anyway. So, that's $287,000. The next group, from 190 to 207, are pretty much the breakdown of the site budgets, which I will get to specifically in a minute. But the 601 account is general classroom. That is paper, pencils, crayons, whatever. And then, you can see, each school has its budget, its supply budget, broken down by subject area. So, there's $33,000 in science, $17,000 in arts and crafts, $9,000 in phys ed, music, and so forth. Until you get down to computer supplies, that is an account that's controlled by our IT department. But home ec and you could see all those other areas, all the way down to food, drink, and snacks. We have... You'll notice in the budget, there's $1,593 for textbooks. We have used alliance money and we have used some of the 1.5 million that was restored to the budget. We are in the process of buying lots of books this year, so we cleared out for next year. So, you'll see, it's a huge decrease. It's a $214,000 decrease. We have the $214,000. It's just not in this budget. It's in the alliance budget, alliance grant. I'm sorry?
Could you explain that again?
Yeah. So, this year, we got a grant from the State Department of Education for $600,000. And they actually encouraged us not to use it for staff because when the alliance district goes away, then you have this problem. So, what we did, actually, Ms. Austin headed up the initiative. We identified the books that would have been nice to have, classroom libraries primarily. And we purchased it this year because that $600,000 will be expended by... Must be expended by June 30th. So, we picked up the 214. We picked up the books. We're just gonna pick them up by June 30th. Workbooks, again. Workbooks is... You and I probably had lots of workbooks when we were going to school. We largely have gone away from that. Children have access to computers and we don't have a lot of paper and pencil drills. In fact, we don't really want them doing paper and pencil drills. Library books, you see, we have a little bit less in library books. But again, well, it went from $21,000 to $15,000. That's really a reflection of the choices that the schools make. We are going way more towards classroom libraries and less one central media center for books. Media centers do other things. Periodicals, you can see, is also down. And then, the last page of this big summary is continuing with the 600 series. The line 216 are guidance, improvement of services in the guidance, which I think Susan is testing, if I'm not mistaken. PSAT testing, that sort of thing. And we have audiovisual admin supplies, school supplies. So, you see, that's down by 31%. Software is down by 11.8. We have combed through. Actually, again, Mrs. Austin went through, did a survey of all the software we used. And if it wasn't really well-used by, say, 50, 60% of the teachers, we eliminated some of those things.
We also ran a survey, too.
That's right, yeah. I meant to say that. Professional materials, down a little bit. Custodial supplies. You'll notice all this is down by 15%. We actually imposed this sort of... We decided to simply reduce those supplies. Heating oil is down, but gas is up. So, we have switched from burning fuel oil, heating oil. And now that the pipeline has been installed at the high school, Codchester, any other place? That's it for now. So, that's why we have increased gas and decreased fuel oil. Equipment. Again, you see, there's a huge decrease in equipment, 441,000 decrease. So, the 730 account, we went through all the requests for equipment. 730 is replacement of instructional equipment. I'd have to look at the function codes in the back to tell you exactly what that is. But I can tell you, 731 is replacement of non-instructional equipment. That is some buildings and grounds equipment, I think, if I'm not mistaken. Sam?
Truck and a cleaning machine?
Yeah.
Zamboni. And then, additional non-instructional equipment. And I know you're gonna ask me about that, Joe, so I'll look it up.
I'm sorry?
I know you'll ask me about what the additional non-instructional equipment is because both of us don't know the answer at this moment, but I'll find out. Dues and fees. We cut Cabe. So, that's the... You know, that's the lion's share. We also cut the National School Board Association. General administrative dues, these come from the... No, sorry. I am a member, well, the district is really, of the Connecticut Association of School Superintendents. We are members of the Connecticut Association of Schools, the CIAC, the Connecticut Interschulastic Athletic Conference. So, those are some of the school-based and district-wide fees. The admin dues, again, are National Association... No. New England Association of Schools and Colleges, NEASC, the accreditation, and those professional organizations, which I'll get to in a minute. And we just looked at this today, other dues. I don't remember. But let me keep going. And then, I'm gonna stop for questions. This chart is a reflection... Let's just take the left-hand column. And you'll notice that it starts... It does not include the 100 series because schools' site budgets don't include people. In other words, we know that schools have teachers, but that's in another part of the budget. And they don't have benefits. But you'll notice they have 300 series, 400 series, 500 series. I'm going right down with my finger on the left-hand column here. Six, a lot of 600s, a little bit of sevens, and a little bit of eights. So, those are all the accounts that the principals include in their site budget. So, let's look at the site budget. The first one is CB, Charles Barnum. And you'll notice, the yellow, that very first column, is FY '19. And the column next to it is this year, FY '18, and then the change. So... We gotta switch glasses for this one. So, what we have is, in the case of Charles Barnum, the principal working with the faculty determines this. Go all the way down to the bottom. It's $41,321. That's what that school has to operate the school, obviously, aside from the people. So, you notice they had 54.4 this year. We cut him back to 41.3. That's the 25% cut. So, now, let's look, see how that faculty did it. They put in, on 430, $3,375 for repair of equipment, a little bit down from this year. They put in 75 for postage, considerably down from 700. They put in 750 for travel for admin, administrative and school travel. They put in 26.25 for workshops. They put in 37.5, $3,750 for field trips.
That's transportation for field trips.
We... 601, just the general paper pencils, 13, 196. Science, you can see, arts and crafts, PE, music, kindergarten, computer supplies. I'm just jumping down here. Math supplies, school library, school admin supplies, 750 for food, drink, and snacks. Workbooks, in this case, they have $3,700 for workbooks, $1,500 for library books, professional materials, additional instructional equipment. I would have to go into the function code, which I'll explain in a minute, and administration dues and fees. So, that's how this chart is read. So, then, if you wanted to know how much money... You wanted to read it all the way across the other way. Get way to the right-hand side and you look at the very top one. Instructional Services, 321. We are spending $2,738 on that this year. And you'd have to go across and find... It's West Side. West Side Middle School. Now, yes?
Do you mean for next year?
For next year, should be $2,738, right?
You just said this year, that's all.
Oh. I have no idea what I'm saying.
If it enters through the site, then district also has support.
Right, 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 yeah. These are... Let's go way down to the bottom of the yellow column on the right. And it says 583,104. That's the total site budget for all the schools, all the sports, all the everything. This year, it was 807, 319. Next year, it will be reduced to 583,104. So, I'd be happy to answer questions about that. But anyway, that's... Okay. Oh, great.
Can you please pass the microphone if Ms. Austin's gonna be speaking?
Too many things called instructional services is our problem. But the numbers are definitely specific for an intended purpose. So, with the 321s and 323, that's where we have some of our field experiences for kids, not the transportation part, but the experiences, like we're committed to Project O, as Dr. Grenier had mentioned. So, that is a big portion. For every grade level, there's a specific guaranteed field experience. It's something that the board actually put back in the budget when we were given the money back because it was something we had taken out. So, we're making sure that we're providing. And that's the total amount, so including what the schools have identified as field. We call them field trips.
Can you please give the page number so we can follow you? Because a lot of people were still on the fold-out page with Dr. Grenier.
So, I'm on 2.4.
Thank you.
And that is line 115, where it says instructional services. And those are the identified field experiences or field trips that we have committed to.
So, under purchased services, line 115 is field trips.
Right. And then, under line 116, which is instructional improvement services, that's what I have for central office, $33,375 to run all the PD for the district in-house. So, we end up having two days in August, actually, two in... So, we end up having two days in August, actually two and a half this year, and after convocation, and then the two days prior to the kids coming in, we have a day in November, and then we also have a day in March for, and we're involved with a regional PD with LEARN, so that our teachers of music and art and our counselors are able to work with a whole network of other educators from this whole region. So, that's, and that is actually down, but because of some of our grant support, we were able to bring it down. And then, the, if you go down to line 121, those are also called professional services. Those are when people come into us and give additional professional development and support our different teams. So, it could be around mental health, it could be for, you know, specialized programs and special ed. So, that's the additional support that we receive. And then on line 122, Other Professional Services.
Excuse me, I think Mr. Perry, Counselor Perry had a question.
I just wondered, the Professional Services shows a 17 percent increase over past year. Why is there an increase of 17 percent?
Well, if you look at the actuals for FY17, we actually spent $259,028, but the estimated and then the budget cost for 18, we only allowed ourselves 176, so I think that was rectifying that and getting it closer to what the actual number is.
But now, for this year, you've got it up to 207 from 176.
Right. But I'm saying back in FY17, it was up to 259, so I think we were hopeful that we could, you know, be spending less, but in actuality, in looking ahead, it's more like 207. So, it's still $59,000 less than it was two years ago.
But it's, how many, it's $30,000 more than last year?
Right. So, it's an adjustment for what we were actually doing.
I'm going to get the detailed printout of the 300 series to 10,000.
And then the last big number, which is the 120, or the 122, which is 332, that's the piece that where we have the medical assistance. So, whether it's, is it the overtime with the nurses, it's the doctors' reports through special education, so it's all of those things that we're by law obligated to do in an IEP for special needs students.
Counselor Muravsek?
Yeah, I thought, hello? Yeah, okay. I understood that the staff or the town manager was paying for the nurses.
They are, but there's like some additional costs that go beyond that we do cover. If there's overtime or...
When nurses go on field trips?
Mm-hmm.
We, the board pays, it's a small...
Okay.
The nursing account is a large account because there are several nurses.
Okay.
And the town pays that portion.
Thank you.
Yes?
Going back to...
Is it working?
No, you have to put it closer to your mouth, that's all.
Going back to Professional Services, 121, the $30,000 increase, are those outside services your choice of bringing in people to speak about?
No, no, those are, those are physicians, those are, I'll give you, I'll give you the breakdown of that tomorrow. Those are special education services that, we do not hire an occupational therapist on staff. So, we, these are people who come in and provide services to the children.
Excuse me, I thought that you had said that 121 was outside PD brought in, and 122 was the outside, like the occupational therapist that was brought in. I believe that's what Ms. Austin said.
I think 332 are like psych evals and that sort of thing, you know, psychiatric services. So, when we, when we request through the Planning and Placement Team process that a child is evaluated psychologically or psychiatrically, that we, we hire a psychiatrist to provide that service for us.
Counselor Oberly?
And it's OT and PT services, what did you say those two stood for?
Occupational and physical therapy.
And we really do physical therapy in the school?
We do, we do. Many children, well, some children have physical therapy as, as part of their educational program, and not only do we provide that, but we also, for those children who are eligible for Medicaid, we, we collect the reimbursement for that, and that goes right to the town.
Could you give me an example?
Sure. There could be a child who is wheelchair-bound and receives a part of his physical education program through a physical therapist. There are occupational therapists, students who don't have eye-hand coordination, small motor skills.
I can understand that one. The other one that kind of surprises me that you'd be doing physical therapy.
Well, I can tell you, for, for young children, the ability to, to move appropriately, to skip, for example, is a, is a large motor skill that's very important to their development. And when that sort of physical problem is identified in a, in a special ed evaluation, we would provide that, that service for the child.
Yeah, thinking of my kids.
Thank you. Earlier today, I believe Mr. Burt and Dr. Grenier and Ms. Landry all had a meeting, so I was wondering if you two would like to address what you had talked about in the meeting?
Sure.
I don't know if Mr. Burt wants to speak, or...
I did. Actually, Ms. Austin was there too.
Ms. Austin as well, thank you. Thank you for doing that today, by the way. We appreciate it, that everybody came out to discuss things.
When we get done grilling you?
Yeah, right. The four of us, the four of us met earlier today. Some of the, few of the things we looked at was, for one thing, they have approximately $2 million in fund balance for the healthcare fund. We looked at the possibility of taking $1 million for this year to offset.
Excuse me?
Can we start one conversation at a table?
Yes. Thank you. I was going to ask that as well. We need to be able to hear and to focus on what the speakers are saying, so if we could all just direct our attention to whoever has the floor. And right now, Mr. Burt has the floor. Thank you.
Starting again, there's approximately $2 million in fund balance for the healthcare fund. We're looking at possibly taking $1 million of that to put towards revenues to offset increasing the mill rate. And then that would leave another million approximately left for possibly next year. And the idea is, two years from now, the hope is that if the school's project moves forward, that we'll have some savings there we can realize. Reducing OPEB liability, this is the first year that they're paying not only OPEB for, what they actually have to pay in the year, but also putting towards the long-term liability. That's about 330-ish?
330.
330,000 that they can cut from expenditures. Department of Defense funds, there's about a fund balance of approximately 900,000, looking at using 250 to 300,000 of that towards the budget. And then, we'd spotted a couple of small savings, and they were going to spend the afternoon trying to close the last bit, the couple hundred thousand remaining gap for the 1.8 million, and I haven't heard since then how that's gone.
And the goal, the goal of your discussions was to get it to MBR?
Correct.
Excellent.
Yes. And the nut we have to crack is 1,849,508, so that's, that's the goal.
Let Chairman Watson read it.
So, Mayor, Town Council and other, sorry, Board of Ed members, so I think that it had become pretty clear in conversations with the mayor that we were, the budget was really looking at a place where we needed to be close to the MBR. And I think after the mayor and I had a conversation, we really, just really, both of us realizing that we were only one member of each one of a board of nine, that we really needed to task the manager and the superintendent on a great holiday weekend with no snow, only kidding, it was snow, to really kind of take a look at what would that look like if, you know, what are all the possibilities? Because my understanding was that there were several different sort of ideas that were being floated, and so what, what really would that look like if we were to get to zero? So, I know that the Town Council, this is the first time looking at this, but I also know that for the Board of Ed, that this is also my first time looking at this as well. And so, we really, I think that that was one of the reasons why we really wanted the four, John Burt and Mike and Sue and Cindy, to really kind of take a look and kind of figure out the ideas. So, I think what Mike was willing to do was to kind of type up, and I think I'll give this back to Dr. Grenier so he can explain, explain it.
Well, after, after we met this morning, we started to, we really went through the budget with a, with a fine-tooth comb, and we noticed there were a couple of things. So, let me walk you down. The first thing is in the salary account, we had another...
Sure. I just want to make sure, did you guys get copies of that? I want to make sure that finance has copies before we go into it.
Is there the stack somewhere? Oh, it's right here.
Sorry.
Yeah, thanks. I'm sorry. I want to do a read. So, what, what we realized, actually just on Thursday, another teacher retired. So, we had a 19th teacher. And that teacher is partially funded, remember I said it was a $30,000 swing, but that teacher is partially funded by a Title I grant, so it wasn't a huge, huge savings, but we certainly will save 7,500. We looked at the general repair account, comparing actuals to projected, and we realized from the 432 account, from the buildings and grounds, Mr. Kilpatrick thought that we could responsibly take another $20,000 off, understanding that we're, we're always looking at a crystal ball, you know, God only knows what's going to break next year, but we think the pattern seems to be supportive of this. The electrical account, we believe, now this object code 655, so these are supplies for the electrical account, we think we could cut 10 from that. We looked at gasoline, actually, thanks to Cindy and John, we, for some reason, we used $28,000 of gas last year. We are on target to use 40,000 this year, which may have something to do with the weather, but we had 50 in there, so we cut 10 back. And then, we, we looked at our dues account, and we had about $20,000 in there for dues, and they're running about 16,000 this year, so we decided we could cut, reasonably cut four from that. So, by the end of our little talk this morning with the staff in my office, we identified $51,500 that could be cut with no damage to, to the instructional programs. And then, this health insurance is, is a little bit difficult to understand, so let me take a crack at it. The board has, as I said, about a $14 million health account. And the, the way the health count works is, you have to have enough money, obviously, to pay your claims, because we're self-insured, but then by law, you have to have 25 percent in what they call corridor funding, just, God forbid, you go to 125 percent of your claims. So, we have all the money for the, for our claims, we have all the money, which we have to have in this corridor account, and then, and then with, with a little bit of luck from claims experience, there's some money left over after all of that 125 percent, and that is what we call our health reserve. And the health insurance reserve is typically posted to us on June 30th. Well, it's not posted on June 30th, there's a June 30 posting. And when, when I spoke to Cindy Landry today, it became clear that we, we were thinking along the lines of probably 1.7 million in that account. We weren't sure how this year was going, which is one of the reasons I'm going to recommend to the Town Council that you, you take no action for a couple of weeks. Because we looked at our health insurance account, and it was running at about 80 percent every month. Instead of it being 100 percent, we project it's going to be, well, $12 million a year, so it's a million bucks a month. So, it was running less than a million, less than a million. In August, it jumped up to more than a million, but that's somewhat common for teachers in August. And then back down to 80 percent, 80 percent, 80 percent. And then in January, it jumped up to 112 percent. And the business manager and our HR director became concerned because they said, maybe, maybe we're not going to have enough money in the account, and it would be irresponsible to use this to offset the budget. So, we were waiting for February to come in with bated breath, and it came in at 80 percent. So, we're better than we are last year. We're better for high claims, more than $50,000 claims, and we're better for experience. Last year was running about 87 percent, this year's running about 83 percent. So, it would appear that not only do we have $2 million, but the important thing is, we will probably have $2 million at the end of June. Notice I said probably. You know, God only knows what will really happen, but by the end of April, or near the end of April, I will be able to tell you what the experience for, for March is. And if, if, if the trend continues for March, then for sure, it would be reasonable, you notice I said, $1 million from the health insurance reserve. That's what John meant. One billion, there's 2 million in there, 1 million to offset the budget, and 1 million to help us for next year. The second thing is, the OPEB, or other post-employment benefits, are the, it's a, it's a function of this, our actuarial runs, you perhaps know this better than I, but anyway, what, what Cindy Landry explained to me was that, that the expected payments for this year are 786,000. So, obviously, we have to pay 700, it would appear, we have to pay 786. But the board put in 1,120,000, trying to be responsible to cover the full actuarial liability. And of course, when you hear the word actuarial, you know it's called guessing. Who, who knows what's really going to happen, but, and it's, and it's in accounting, it's a reasonable accounting thing. But, so what, what John and I talked about today with Susan and Cindy was, maybe this is not the year to extend beyond the actual claims, but that we, we sort of pull back. So, the, hence the 1 million from the health insurance reserve, and back off from the 333,000 for the, for OPEB, which would mean we would reduce the budget by 1,100, or offset, is a better word, 1,133,000. And then, and then we realized, if we did that, we would need a reduction of 464,815 dollars to get to MBR. And the way we could do that is, we have a fund that I mentioned the other night, it's called the Department of Defense Supplemental Impact Aid. When, when you are an Impact Aid district, that money comes from the Federal Education Department. But the Federal Education Department, if, it could be for Indian reservations, all kinds of federally impacted land. But if your federally impacted property are military children, and it's more than 20 percent, that gets forwarded, those data get forwarded to the Department of Defense, and the Department of Defense provides the board, it usually runs anywhere from 225 to 300,000 a year of, actually, undesigned funds. It's just to help the district because the military understands that it's... It's just to help the district, because the military understands that educating military children with lots of mobility is more expensive than more, less stable kids, or more stable kids. And so there, when I got here, there was about, about 1.2 million in that account. It hadn't been used for a long time. Hadn't been used for like, four or five years. And I thought, that doesn't make any sense, that we're just sitting on a million something. So the first, Mr. Whiteoff was the chairman, a member of the Finance Committee, and, and I approached him and said, maybe we should just take the amount of money, we get it in June, by the way. Let's take the June amount, and let's use it for technology. So that's how we started the, the one-to-one initiative, where we gave every high school student a Chromebook, a Chromebook computer. And so that's what we've been doing for the last several years. But there's about $990,000 in that account. So the idea here would be that we would, we would use 600, $464,000 to bring the budget, we could use $464,000. And it would, it would come, so the, the items in this budget, some of the site budget, a little bit of the equipment, it really doesn't make any difference, it's undesigned funds, would be used, and so that the, the budget would go forward as planned, the services would go forward as planned, but the budget would remain 76, 468, 239. And we would enter next year, please God, with a million dollars in our reserve, a half a million dollars in our military, our DOD supplemental impact aid. And as Mrs. Austin was pointing out earlier, we, we are pretty much using the money that we get, the 200, $250,000, to pay for student, high school computers. And that's only about, Chromebooks are relatively inexpensive. So we can give 300 kids computers for about $90,000. So even if we go down to the 464, and we get the $90,000 worth of computers, there'll still be 100, 125,000 that will be left in the Department of Defense Supplemental Impact Aid account. So that instead of having about 500,000, we would probably have about 700,000. So we'd have a million, if the health insurance goes the way we think, the way it's trending. We would have a million in our reserve, and we would have about 700,000 in our Department of Defense. So, so that we're not starting next year, I mean, obviously, nobody wants us to start in the hole next year. So that's really the reflection of our dialogue. And, you know, and we continue to look at, as we did today, but, you know, it's, it's a big budget, it's, you know, 61% of the town, and we've gone over this budget lots of times. And almost, almost every night, and now there's another 51,000, every, not almost, every night that the, the board looked at this budget earlier in the year, cut anywhere from 250 to 350,000, Rachel was there most nights. And so we just kept on cutting. But we never got to the point where we, I remember one, one night, I suggested we would cut field trips, and, and the board said, absolutely not. So there, there were lots of suggestions, you know, to try to get to some numbers, but the, the board maintained its, its values, and made sure that the, the services, the children would, would get the instruct, I mean, and so, for me, the big thing is, class size remains the same. We are using, thanks to Susan Austin, we're, we've got some clever uses of some of our grants, the Alliance Grant, which we don't know that we're going to have for next year, but we have it for this year. And so we've, we've tapped that for some equipment, we've tapped that for some computers, for example, and we've tapped that for lots of books. We also have two big Department of Defense Educational Activity, DODIA, grants, to help us with literacy and math. So we, you know, we, we use our grants as, as efficiently as we possibly can. So I wouldn't want the public to think we're cutting books and computers and services, that's not what we're doing. We are, we are trying to provide the, the same, same level of service, literally, and, you know, the, I certainly understand the notion of a minimum budget. You know, at a certain point, it's going to have to go up, you know, sorry to tell you. But, you know, conceivably, in, well, I think I said this to you before, next year is going to be a struggle that we're dealing with, the year after that is going to be a struggle, but the year after that, we're going to build a new middle school and consolidate faculty, it's going to be about a 0.6% decrease in the budget. Not just the savings, not just an offset of increases, but the projection is for an actual decrease. And then the year after that, I haven't told the board yet, but they're about ready to hire the architect for the two elementary schools, and they want to know what the themes are by Monday. So we've got a lot of work to do between then and now. But these, these schools are moving along, they are thinking about starting, building them soon.
Thank you. So I just wanted to thank all of you that met today, including Ms. Landry, for putting this together for us. And there's always a concern that, that when you try to just cut, 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 that you're going to do things that aren't financially responsible, but I trust our finance director that would not permit any of these recommendations if she felt it were putting anybody at risk. So thank you for doing that. So now, do any of the counselors have questions for Dr. Grenier, Mr. Burt, the finance director, Counselor Schmidt, followed by Zepari?
Yes, I was looking through everything, and in the green section, it looks as though you're asking for 222 elementary teachers for next year. But in the white section, I guess that's 3.3, there are 114 listed, so that would be an addition of 108 teachers.
Wait, help me out here, thank you for...
Page 4-1. It lists the teachers for each school.
Actually, I have that left on.
And on page 33, I think it's 33 and 34.
So, I, I'm sorry, the first page was 4-1?
Right.
And...
Right. For the elementary schools only, would be 222. And when you go back to the white section, I guess it's 3.3, 3.2 and 3.3, when you add up the teachers, there's a total at the bottom that says 114 teachers. Right down here. So that would be a sizable increase. And I don't know about the middle schools and the high school, because they're not actually listed any place on the third section.
Yes, they, oh, they're not listed the same way. But they are there.
But they are in 4.1.
4.2. Just the all-classroom teachers, 309. I'm sorry, Rita, could you, could you use the microphone?
Well, I don't know, it's confusing, because the figures keep changing.
I was looking at this also, but on page 4.2, you look under teachers, classroom teachers, it's 309.
I know what the answer is, okay.
Are you with us?
I am.
And then the special ed, you have to add on the special ed teachers, I think they separated them, from general classroom to special education.
Right. Rita, on 3.3, the 115, or next year, 114 teachers, those are purely classroom teachers. No special ed, no media center, no speech pathologist, just classroom teachers. So the, the additional teachers, which was on 4-1, what did we say that was?
Evidently, that does include all the different teachers.
I need, I need to do a little math here.
If we're looking at 4-2, is that the page you were, Ms. Volkman?
Yes.
Where it has the special ed, the media specialist guidance, all of the outside-the-classroom teachers, is what makes the difference then between the two numbers that Counselor Schmidt was referring to?
And then, at looking at the figures, it looks as though there are more, 10 more teachers at Westside Middle School, and almost 200 fewer students.
Yeah, you know, I just said to, to Chairman Watson, I answered all your questions in a highly competent way this afternoon, Rita.
Right.
And they're right on my desk, waiting to be read and distributed to this august group. And I apologize. I was, here's, here's my, as I say in the Coast Guard, no excuse, ma'am, here's how I spent my day. I didn't do much else. So I apologize. I will send them to you first thing tomorrow. The, the numbers in the book, I can, I can tell you, I, when I checked the actual number of teachers, it, there was not a lot. First of all, both middle schools have very similar numbers, like 456 to 462, or something like that. That's not reflected here, I'm going to give you the real numbers tomorrow. Westside, Westside does have an additional program that we call the Academy Program. It's for children with special education behavior issues. And so we've got a couple of teachers in there, and three or four paraprofessionals. There are some additional personnel for that reason. Same, same exact class sizes. Basically, at the middle schools, we, we take the number of children, number of sixth graders, for example, who enter, and half of them go to one team, and half go to the other team, and, and the teachers teach five subjects, four academics, and then a kind of a study skills. So we take the number of children, we'll say 80 or 90 children, and divide that by four, and that's what is in each class. But I apologize, I'll, I'll get you...
Also homebound, different, that's through the...
Oh, I see, right, right.
Counselor Zepari has the floor next, please.
Could you tell us how many full-time positions you have added this year?
We haven't, I don't think we've added any. We, we cut 18 teachers, one principal, one secretary, and two custodians, with the closure of Pleasant Valley School. Thank you.
Do other counselors have questions? Counselor Atwater?
No, that was in last year's budget.
I believe there's a mic right next to Ms. Newsom.
No, but it was in last year's budget. They were there, Mike was there. Did I miss something?
No. Counselor Atwater?
I have a, I want to say it's a stupid question, but it shows here you've got 441 teachers, and you've got...
No, yeah, that's not true. It probably shows it, but I don't believe that's true. What page is that, Counselor Atwater?
On page 4.2.
That's true.
Okay. Yeah, 441, okay.
441. And somewhere in the charts, you had breakdowns of students, and it's like 4,600 or 700 or something. And yet, it's showing in classroom sizes, 18, 19, 15, 21.
Yeah.
But in my head, if you've got 441 teachers divided into 4,700 students, it's about 10 per classroom.
Right.
And I say, it's, I'm sure it's a stupid question, so how do you figure classroom sizes?
It's not stupid at all. Let me, let me go back to that list. The 101s, classroom teachers, the 310 classroom teachers, those, that's, that's a straight. But there are reading specialists, who are not in, in the same classroom. There are math specialists, there are actually six, seven of those, now eight. So there are 16 reading and math specialists. There are, there are, well, special education, there's, there's 92.1, no, that's here, that, but I'm saying, of the 309, there are nine media specialists, there are 12 counselors. The 17 homebound, again, you have to subtract that, those are, those are personnel, like tutors, who go and provide homebound instruction for children who are ill and injured and so forth. So those are, those are not teachers in, in our building. We, we have, I'm trying to think, so we have 16, 16, besides reading, math, so we have 16 of those, we have 12, what did I say, no, 17, that's 23.
So if you aren't, while, while he's doing that, while you're on page 4-2, if you look at the row that reads teachers, and you see all the subcodes there, 101, 102, 103, 104, 124, and 125, 101 are the actual classroom teachers. And I believe that's how you calculate class size, is just based on the classroom teachers.
Right.
And the, that doesn't mean you don't need the other people, you, you need your special ed people in the rooms, you need your media specialists, your guidance, and everything else. So you can't use the 441 to calculate class size. I believe that's correct.
Yeah. Well, there's, the 309, then you'd have to take 16 right off the top, because those are our reading and math specialists. So, so that means, that's not, so now we're down to 293. You know what, let me, let me, let me see if I can't, it is, it is not a, not a foolish question at all. Let me see if I can't get, you know what, what I, what I do have, and I'm going to put this, I'm going to send everyone an email tomorrow, but if you could, just like every third person or so, take, for the last 19 years, I've tried to explain high school schedules to boards, and I'm not sure I can, I'm still ever going to be able to do it.
I need, I need one for, over there as well, so I can't give you some...
Basically, I'm just going to orient you to this doc, to this document. No, 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 I'm going to send it to you tomorrow. I'm going to send you this document tomorrow. But what you're going to see is this, the first, the first teacher here, this is why it's so complicated, the first teacher is an art teacher, it's by department, this is the art department. There are first semester classes and second semester classes. There are A-day classes, four A-day classes, and four B-day classes. And so this particular art teacher, first period has 20 students, second period 11, third period 8, fourth period 20, fifth period 20, next period 14, next period 18, next period 14. So if you, I guess I could take an arith, you know, an arithmetic mean of that, 20, 11, 8, 20, 20, you know, it'd probably be 18, or 17, or something like that. Some of the, some of the teachers, you know, I'll take the, the last one here, 20, 19, 20, 20, 11, 20, 20, 19, 11. It's, it's hard to actually figure out, because in some cases, a teacher, especially an AB teacher, art, I probably shouldn't have started with the art department, because they have semester courses. But if I look at, if I look at math, I'll take the, the, the first teacher would be 24, 23, 11, 10, 23, 14, and 11. 11, because it's math intervention, we want there to be a small number of kids, 24, because it's honors Algebra II, 23, it's honors Algebra II, 11, as I said, with math intervention. So in a, in a six-period, they teach six periods over two days, and what I, I always like to, to point out, and gotten, because I've never seen this before, the, the standard across this country is teachers teach five classes. Is that fair to say?
Choose not to answer.
In any-
[laughing]
Well, let me, let me, let me take my colleague off the hook. In any school where I have been principal or superintendent, the teachers at the high school teach five classes, five total classes. In this school, they teach six total classes. It is, it is a big, a big deal, that the teachers, the contract allows for teachers to be assigned. So, so we have four periods, four 82-minute periods, and the teachers teach three of them, and they have one period for, for a prep. So, when I say, you, you have to look at the six classes that the teachers teach, and in the case of semester classes, they could teach 12, six in the fall and six in the spring. And some of the classes are, are, appear to be small, especially, I, I knew there was a, there was some discussion that was provided publicly about class sizes, and there were some mathematics that was done. But what, what I think the person didn't understand is, we take an art class, there could be an art class of 10 or 15 kids, art one, and there's a portfolio class in that same period of seven kids. So, now you've got a class of 19 kids. It doesn't look like that if you just add up the classes and you divide. Generally speaking, you know, for me, I say, not only as a superintendent, but as a grandfather of children in this system, there's about 20 kids to a class. Sometimes a little bit more, sometimes a little bit less, unless we want it to be really less, like special education. But by and large, the classes are, are about 20. I spoke to someone from California recently, and they said, once it gets over 40, they got real problems. And, you know, if you, if you go into, Ms. Austin and I spent a fair amount of time in elementary classrooms, and you go into a class, kindergarten class of 18 or 19, five-year-olds, it's, it's, that's an event. Add five or six more, it, it really, really becomes very problematic. So, the idea that the board has been able to put a budget together that provides about 20 children, pretty much, sometimes there's a little bit more, but that's really the heart of the program. So, I'm going to send this tomorrow to the town council, and I'm going to send autographed copy to Counselor Zepari of the 300 account, and with my apologies, and I'm going to send you, actually, I'm going to send everyone. Rita, I really do apologize. Rita asked some really terrific questions, and my secretary and I spent a fair amount of the day answering them, only to leave them on my desk. But they won't remain on my desk.
Thank you. Counselor Heat, please.
First of all, thank you very much for this Herculean effort. I feel like we should give them some gold stars.
[laughing]
But of course, this is based on a roll of the dice. So, what happens if the assumptions are incorrect and you have to come back for more?
You'll have to repeat it, Counselor Heat, please.
Right, so, the assumptions are-
Gold stars and all.
Sorry?
Say the gold stars and all.
No, no, we'll skip past that. So, we make some assumptions that we can cut the health insurance account, because we're self-funded, so say, you end up having to, well, I'm assuming you would have to come back to us for more in the middle of the year.
I, I certainly don't think we would do that. If, if there's, well, first of all, we have stop-loss insurance, so I, you know, I don't want to alarm anyone that if there were some significantly higher claims, that we would just be at, at the mercy of, of paying them. We do, we do have a stop-loss insurance, and we have stop-loss for the, the really high claims, primarily. So, I, I think the answer is, we, we know we have $990,000 in our Department of Defense Supplemental Impact Aid account. That's not subject to any, any problems. We, we know that the, the health insurance, we had about $2 million in our reserve account. So, I think, as we, as we move throughout the year, as I said, we, we budget, it's just a mathematical budget, we budget $958,000 a month. Every single month, I told you, August was high, and then January was high. When we saw January was high, we all got nervous, like maybe we're going on a bad trend. February came in even lower than last year. So, that's why I was hoping that if the council could postpone its action, I would be, I'd really like to answer your question on about April 20th, because then I'll have the, I'll have the, the March numbers. And if that trend continues, then I'm, I'm going to be very confident that we can, we can do what I'm suggesting.
Counselor O'Bree, can, Counselor Schmidt pass Counselor O'Bree the microphone, please? Thank you.
I had a question. I've heard a lot of conversation about the fact that our population is dropping, but going through the numbers, I'm not seeing where our population is dropping.
It's going up next year. It'll be up, I think it's going to be up by about 100.
Okay.
Now, excuse me, and when I say, this is a little confusing point. The, the so-called numbers for the board include the children that are, who attend our schools, and the children for whom the board pays tuition. And if, if you look, I can, I can show you here, I think, pretty quickly. If, if you look at, if you look at our, I'm sorry, page 3-1, you'll, you'll notice that the FY19 projected numbers, you know what? Let's, let's use the one column over, FY18 PSIS, which stands for Public School Information System. Those are real numbers. The state takes attendance, for better or for worse, on October 1st every year. That's it. That's your, that's your enrollment. And so, this past year, it's actually September 30th, if I'm not mistaken, because October 1st fell on a weekend, the number that we actually had in our school district was 4,310 children. We had 462 children for whom we paid tuition. In other words, we had 30 at Ledgerd, we had 78 at Regional Multicultural Magnet School in New London, and 62, I think it was, at Marine Science School. So, if you add up all of those children, some of, some of whom, for example, the Marine Science students, they, they play sports. So, when I say they're, when I say that they're our children, I, I mean that literally, they, we pay their tuition, they play sports for us, we, we transport them. So, in, in every, in every way, I, I think of them as, well, they are Groton children. So, that's 462. So, sometimes when people say we have only 4,300, in my mind, we had, last, last September 30th, we had 4,772. The way it's stacking up, based upon enrollments, is we think it's going to be up to about 4,894, 4,894, which, for years, actually, for a couple of decades, has been about Groton's population, been very stable, it's been about 5,000 kids. Used to be, way back when, 6,000, but that was a long time ago. It's been about 5,000 for a long time. Rich?
How many students do we have from the military, and how many students do we have in Balfour Beatty that aren't military?
Only because I, I remember, because it's a brilliant thing I wrote for Rita, we have 145 children who are civilians living in Balfour Beatty. How many total military children? I think it's about 1,200.
It's a quarter about.
It's a quarter. So, yeah, about, about, about 1,200.
Counselor O'Bree, did you have, are you finished with your questions?
No, I had another question. When you were talking about the monies that we get from the military, that was over and above what we get per student from the military?
Correct. We, we get, well, we get two sources of money from the federal government, actually, three. We get $1 million for special education. That's the IDEA grant. But the impact aid, two impact aids, first one comes from the Federal Education Department, and that is for children who, whose parents live or work on federally impacted property. So, of course, all of Balfour Beatty, obviously, all the dependents of, of active-duty military, but people who work on EB, people who work at the base, people who work at the casino, because casinos are federally impacted properties, it's, it's a broad, it's a broad spectrum. So, we get, this year, we should get $3.2 million of federal education impact aid, federal education department. The, the money, and that comes right to the town. The money that comes from the Department of Defense comes right to the board. It's, it's a straight pass-through for the purpose of helping to educate the children.
And about how much is that?
It's about 2, I think it was 229 last year. June, it comes in June. No, 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 225,000. Oh, sign me up.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And presently, though, you're saying we, we are getting something for the children that are non-military that live in Balfour Beatty?
Yeah, it's, it's sort of ridiculous. For a military dependent, we get about $3,200, actually, 35, per child. For a civilian living in Balfour Beatty, we get 185.
And if I may, just-
It's, it's a huge hit. It's about a $500,000 swing.
Right. And when budget is finished, Mr. Burt has told us that he's going to be working on-
I realize we're going forward with that.
He's going to be working on that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Are there any other counselors before, remember, Member Volkman? Counselor O'Bree, can you pass the mic, please, to Ms. Volkman? Thank you.
I have a couple of concerns on page 3.4, where you talk about the middle school enrollment. You look at Cutler for this year, has 471 students, and Westside Middle has 450. This is 3.4. And next year, you have, at Cutler, 570 students. So, we'd like, I'd like a new page on this.
Yeah.
And I'd also like to see the FTEs for each of the schools, because you have them always for the elementary, but that was one of your questions.
It's, it's, it's done, and you will get it first thing tomorrow morning.
Great. And then, if we go to pages 3.2 and 3.3, the bellwether for me, when I look at the class sizes, is kindergarten. And I always have a concern, there are too many little children in one class. At the same time, I'm also concerned if there are too few. So, if we look at Charles Barnham, oh, no, Espy Butler, first grade, a kindergarten, actually, in Butler, there are 25 students, two teachers, and that is 12.5 students.
Yeah, but, of course, they haven't registered yet, so we're, we're projecting, we're projecting the pattern, of course, and this, this time of year-
But, but yet, we have a pattern for all the other schools, and you're projecting, and they're all about 19.7, 21.5, you know, they're all up there.
Right, right, right.
But for some reason, and, and I just want to be aware that there, I know there are children that are going to Butler from different parts of town, and if we need to, we need to transport more students there. I think that's very important, because we can't have class sizes of 12.5. And it, and also, when you look at Charles Barnham, third grade, you have 44 students, three teachers. I think for a third grade, that could easily be two FTEs, not one, not three.
You're right.
So, I, I'm really concerned about some of these, and I, and I'd like you to, you know, be aware that we, that's very, very important, that there's equity across the district.
Yep.
And that, we, you know-
Yes.
We, we need to look at that. And it's the same way at the high school, when you pass out that sheet, it's the most confusing thing, and I'm sure there's a better way of doing that, where you could project it, what was it, in the fall? How many teachers were teaching, how many FTEs, how many students in the classroom, and then again, this spring? So, it doesn't look like this, because this is, you know, it doesn't tell us anything, but it's just, makes it very confusing. But if we could have exactly, you know, the, how many English teachers, what were their class sizes last fall, and then for this spring semester, I think we'd understand a lot more than looking at AB. I mean, you can do the AB, the A schedule, the B schedule, how many teachers were there, and we can see what their class sizes are really like.
Thank you very much. Counselor Franco?
I'd like to thank you for getting it down so quickly, so we have less work to do tonight. I have a question regarding, and I sent you an email that I would be asking some questions. Some of, when it came to a school closing, I, I tried to look at the budget and compare 2017 to what we're doing in 2019, because last year was-
What page are you on?
She's not there yet. I'm not there yet. Can you let her do her question? So, I, I tried to look at the budget from 2017 to 2019, and really not pay a lot of attention in the middle year, because it was just a disaster going through that. So, I'm on page 2.3. And I was trying to take into consideration that a school had been closed when I looked at this. So, if we take object code 107, which is on line 61, there's an assistant principal, and we're up this year compared to 2017 by like 76,000. The administrator number is 61, and the object code is 107. I also took into account-
Well, there's a 1.6% increase. Are we agreed?
I went from 2017.
Well, there's, there was about 1.6 contractual increase each of those years. So, in other words-
So, we didn't get rid of an assistant principal to lower it-
No, 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 we did not.
When we closed a school?
We did. There was, that school happened to have a principal only.
Oh, okay.
Pleasant Valley didn't have an assistant principal.
And from, the teacher codes, number 64 to 67, which are object code 101 to 104.
Gotcha.
If I took for year 17, we're at 33.6 million, and in 2019, we're at 33.8. So, we have an increase, although we let a lot of teachers go when we closed that school, or they retired.
It went from 33, what?
33.6.
Yeah.
And in 2019, it's 33.8.
So, adjusted 200,000, $200,000?
Increase in teachers.
The increase in teachers is usually about 750,000 a year. Because if you, if you take the teacher account, let's, let's, let's look here-
So, if we had closed a school, we saved, but then we had, because of increases for teachers that are already in the system-
Yeah.
They increased it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Look at, look at line 2. Even, even with the closure, the, the teachers are, are going up by, by $350,000, because teachers get a general wage increase, and then they typically get steps. So, a, a top-step teacher gets about $85,000, $90,000 a year, but a beginning teacher gets about 45, 46. But they march up the steps. So, when you combine the steps with, steps are usually worth about 1.5%. So, if the teachers get like a 1% increase, it, it looks like a general wage increase of 1%, a large, about, about half of the teachers are not on top step, so they get 1 and 1/2, plus that one, they get 2 and 1/2%. So, the, so the increase, if, if you look at 17, if you, well, yeah, you, you're right. It, from, from 17, well, actually, from 17 to 18, it looks like it went from 34.5 down to 33.5. So, there's your million bucks. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Right. There's your 18 teachers.
Okay, because I, there are many people asking where- Okay, 'cause I, I, there are many people asking where are the savings from when the school closed, so that's what they want to know.
So, in 17-
So, if you're looking at 2017, and you're saying, all right, some things happened in 2018, and they're looking for the savings from-
Well, from 17 to 18, that's when the hit occurred. It went from 34.5 to 33.5. So, there's a million bucks right there. There's your answer.
Okay, 'cause there, there's just many people asking, wondering where the savings are. That's what I'm trying to say.
Well, here's, here's, here's the, here's the short answer. And, and I know everyone's asking this question. When, when the board was here a year ago tonight, it's bad karma for me to be here tonight. A year ago tonight, the town council cut 5.2 million dollars, 5.2 million. And the reason they cut 5.2 million is they took, there was, there was a 1.4 million dollar, uh, increase, uh, and, and so what the town council did was rolled back the increase, plus all the way back, uh, down to 74.9. So, when, when that happened, the, the, uh, there was a total cut of, of, of 5, 5.2. Fortunately, they restored a good bit of it, about half. And so, we, we lost 2.8 million. So, we started, started the year July 1st minus 2.8 million dollars. With that 2.8 million dollars, how did we afford to lose 2.8 million dollars? We closed the school, that was 1.3 million, and we made cuts of 1.5 million. When this body restored the 1.5 million, it went back to zero, and the 1.3 million, we lost. It was gone. So, that's why we're in a third, a second, second year of a 0% increase. We came down 2.8, we went back 1.1. So, so the, so the question that everyone should be asking is, where did that 1.3 million go? And the answer is, you just found it. We lost, we lost 1.3 million dollars worth of teachers and other staff.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Sorry.
For some reason, people get confused. I, I, you have, you have to understand, the board needed a 2.8% increase. I mean-
You began above MBR.
We began, yes, last year.
Above MBR.
That's right.
And then you had to cut, which brought you below MBR.
Way back, way below.
And then the council gave you back 1.5 to bring you to MBR.
Exactly. And so, what, what we lost above MBR was 1.3 million, bingo, that's it. You just, you just identified it.
Okay. I have one more thing.
Okay.
Because I have had some people asking me about this. The IB program versus the AP program, and the cost of the IB program, and, um, there are people that have said to me that the IB program, they're having a hard time getting it recognized by colleges, and-
Boy, that's not my experience. My grandson is getting all kinds of offers purely because of IB.
And that, that the IB program, the parents have told me that they're not being recognized by colleges, but they are getting AP credit for them.
That is not true for a young man I was just with the other day, who just got accepted to Yale. It is not true for the young lady who got accepted to Harvard. Uh, it is not true for the, I, I, well, I was on the admissions board for the Coast Guard Academy. Whoever is telling you that is misinformed. The International Baccalaureate, actually, the opposite is happening, as the board knows. I've, I've received requests for neighboring communities to come here and pay tuition, because they want into the IB, uh, program, including a certain town manager that I know, whose children participated in the IB program. The IB program is the, it is the, the most prestigious academic program available in the world. And for, uh, for us to have that program, when, uh, when I, uh, when I looked at the program five years ago, uh, there were six students, uh, competing for the diploma program. Uh, now, there are 48. Uh, there were about 50 students who were taking IB classes. Now, there are 318. Uh, the IB program, there are two IBs. There's an IB diploma program, which is a four, is a six-course sequence, and you get an I, if you pass the test, that are corrected in Geneva. Uh, you can get an IB diploma. Uh, and then, there are IB classes that kids take, just like AP classes. They're, they're terrific classes. Uh, but, but AP is not a program in that you don't get an AP diploma or something out of it. Uh, IB is an actual matriculated program that children can participate in, and it is, uh, it is hugely acknowledged, uh, around the country.
So, there are how many kids in the IB program? I'm sorry?
In the DP program, diploma program, 48.
And is that the, um, towards the back of the package, there's a breakdown of cost and budget? Is that for them, or is that for the whole program?
Where, where's that?
On page 5.9.
So, the, the, the classroom, the classroom teachers, eh, this is a bit of a misnomer. So, Mr. Smith teaches six classes, two of them are IB. The two IB are charged to this account. Now, if Mr. Smith didn't teach IB, he would still teach those six classes. They just wouldn't, does that make sense?
I think so.
Mrs. Jones doesn't teach any IB classes. All of her money is in the teacher. But, but Mr. McCarthy, he teaches IB science, two IB science. Two of his, he teaches six classes. One-third of his salary is in IB, and two-thirds is in the regular. So, in other words, if you got rid of the-
So, is this for the, for the whole program, or is this for those 40-some kids?
Yeah, yeah, this is for the whole pro, a, a, anyone, anyone who was teaching IB, a fraction of their, i- if they teach IB, a fraction of their salary is listed here.
Okay, 'cause also, the packet you sent out, that you just handed out, had IB classes, that there sometimes are only one child in a class?
Really?
Yes.
Latin.
Oh, no, that, that, that's not a real class. That, I mean, that, that's, that's not a separate period for that teacher.
There's IB language, non-English Spanish.
Wait, help me out. Give me the teacher.
It's the-
Last page.
I don't know if we can give, can we get a teacher?
No, it's public.
It's the second to the last page.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, there's IB language, non-English Spanish. There's IB classic studies in Latin. Classic studies in Latin.
Yeah, but, but, excuse me. That's a perfect one. Look at IB Latin 2, please. Did you see at Latin 1? What period is Latin 1?
Can you say what page?
It's the second to the last page of that big packet there.
It's the, it's the high school packet. What, how, how many kids are in Latin 1, period 4B?
I don't even, Latin 1, 4B, 14.
How many kids are in IB classical studies, 4B?
One.
Where are they? They're in the same class. You see what I'm saying?
Good question.
So, the one kid-
So, you're teaching the IB kids along with-
Yeah, that's it, of course, yes.
-regular students. So, when you see on here that it says one-
Yeah, right.
-that's not accurate as, as a class.
No, 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 because she's, well, it's a class for that kid.
Okay, but it's also including other children.
Oh, yeah, yeah, of course.
Okay.
So, here's the problem. You, I'm an IB student, and I take my, my five classes. If I don't get that sixth class, I don't get my diploma. So, the kid scrambled. So, this kid is taking classical, his, his specialty is in classical languages, and so, that kid needs that class, and, and the teacher is willing to teach the kid the IB curriculum along with the Latin 1.
Okay, I see. Thank you for explaining that.
You're welcome.
Because I was a little surprised by the one.
And schools do the same thing with, um, AP classes, if you want to take like a French 5.
That's right.
They'll put you sitting in the same classroom with the French 4 kid.
And sometimes IB and AP are in the same room.
Um, Counselor Parker's next.
All right, just two questions. On 2-3, I just want some clarification, just to make sure. Under the administrators, the admin principals and assistant principals-
What line, please?
59 through 62 at the top.
Okay, gotcha.
Page, okay. Are those increases contractual increases?
Yes. Admin 2%, uh, principals, uh, 3.4%. That, that actually includes the 3.4%, I think the increase was only 2%. It includes steps, because when we hire somebody, we only give them 90% of their salary for the first year, then 92.5% for the second. It takes them three years to walk up to the full salary.
Okay. Actually, I'm going to end up with three questions.
Okay.
So, this is for next year. How many, how long is the term of the contractual?
It's a three-year contract.
Three-year contract. So, this is beginning next year, 2019, be a new contract for the adminis, administrators.
Well, there's, there's a new contractual agreement for that, if that's what you're asking.
Is that beginning next year, or is it the year?
No, no, it, we're in the middle of the year of a three-year contract.
Administration.
Administration.
Yes.
You're in the middle of it.
We're in the middle. Teachers, this is the last year for the teachers.
In August, we'll start negotiations for the teacher's contract.
Okay.
But the other, but the administrator, um, the principal one is in the middle of that. Sorry.
All right.
Sure. So, in August, we're going to be doing negotiations for the teachers, um, for the teacher's contract, but we are in year two.
Two. We, we do have one more year.
We have one more year of the, of the principal contract.
Okay.
And also, the teacher contract.
All right.
Because we have to negotiate.
Okay, now, we're going to go down to line 86 with the clerical. I see there's a decrease, but does that also include, do they get a contractual? Is there a contract for them, and do they get steps? And does that include that decrease?
So, we are going to be going into contract negotiations with the clerical very soon. In fact, like, we've, we've just-
We, we did a, the, the-
We did a one-year.
We did a one-year extension for 1% because their, their representative actually took a job at some other place. So, we got to the end of the year, the contract-
You, wait, timeout.
The contract expired. They did not have a rep, and I, uh, and I suggested to the board that we extend the contract with a modest increase. So, that's another contract that we have to negotiate this, this, uh, this spring. But, yes, there, there was, there was, uh, an increase. Um, I'm gonna have to, this, we, 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 I know we cut a, because Secretary, obviously, from Pleasant Valley, I, uh, I'm not sure, um, I'm gonna have to find that out for you.
Okay. And they do get steps, too?
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, at this time, the council's going to recess for five minutes, just for a quick break. Are we back? Okay, so, we are trying to figure out what day Dr. Granier will have the numbers for the health insurance. So, you're going to have to just excuse us for a minute while we go back and forth and trying to, to banter where we think we can find a date that will work, because we can't push it to the last date, because the finance director is going to have to calculate the mill rate, so we cannot have it on the 24th of April. That means that the next date before that is Wednesday, April 18th, but, um, we're not sure if, um, staff will be in town. So, that's what we're discussing. So, Mr. Burt has something else he'd like to add.
Just to add that those numbers aren't really going to affect this year. You know, let's say we had a couple, you had a couple of bad months. Well, it's really going to affect how much is left over for that second year. So, really, I feel comfortable with what we're looking at for this year. I don't think it's necessarily needed to see the March numbers.
So, then, what the council needs to decide at this point is, um, we, we don't, we didn't put a number on the floor, because we were just doing budget presentations at this point. Um, the council needs to make a decision whether they want to move a number tonight, or if you want to postpone. But if you want to postpone, it has to be to a date definite, which is what we were trying to figure out. So, if you wish to postpone, it should not be any later than the 18th. That's the last possible day that the council can do. However, um, board staff may not be available to receive those numbers on the 18th. So, it may need to be sooner, and that's, it gets a little complicated. So, I don't know what the pleasure of the council is at this point. Can someone give Counselors Zepari the mic, please?
I'd like to see us move for the MBR today.
Counselor, could you pass the microphone over to the other counselors who wanted to express their opinion as well?
Um, I know we've asked a lot of questions, and we've gotten a lot of good answers, but I, I would prefer that we wait, and maybe, we have a regular meeting on the 10th, and maybe we could have a, a meeting prior to the meeting on the 10th. Can't?
Dr. Granier?
Well, what I was going to recommend, appreciate you saying that, the, the board has a meeting on the 9th, and I, I have to say that this is the first time the board has seen this. So, I would request that, that the town council take the vote on, on the 10th, which would give us an opportunity to, uh, have a dialogue at, at the board level, and, and come back on the 10th.
April 10?
April 10.
Yeah, that's the date I said.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah, that's why I said, thank you.
So, we have, we have one counselor that would like to move tonight, another that would like to postpone until the 10th, which is, would have to be a special meeting, um, to adjust the, to adjust the calendar, so-
We have a Cow meeting at 6:30 that night, so it'd have to be something earlier.
Right. And I don't know what the proper process is for scheduling an extra session. Um, do we have enough time to notice? What day is today? Two or three?
Are you in budget, can I ask a question?
It's one long meeting, but I don't know if we can schedule extra sessions or not. I don't know how that works. We'll have to check that. So, that's another thing. So, just, do any other counselors want to voice their opinion about what they would like to do?
I was just going to continue and just say that I appreciate greatly what John and Cindy have done. It's a big, big, big help, and I appreciate you being so open to it. But I think we need a little time to digest. Maybe it's just me. Maybe I'm slower than everybody else here, but I think we should give ourselves just a little time.
Dr. Granier, when, when does the Board of Education meet on that Monday?
Uh, 6 o'clock, 6 o'clock, Monday night, the 9th.
Because we're, we have a budget meeting that night, and I'm wondering if, if we postponed our discussion until the latter part of our budget meeting, we could do it that night, and we wouldn't have to spe, uh, arrange a special meeting or whatever. It would all, it would just come later in the evening of that same night.
So, then, that would only address one of the issues that, that we were having with this. One, one of the issues was, he's not going to have his numbers by the 9th.
Yeah.
And then, that would only address the second issue of people wanting to mull this over a little bit and give greater consideration. So, just keep that in mind as you're expressing what you would like to do, Counselor-
Right, but Mr. Burt said that he doesn't think it's going to make a, a huge difference. And I, I would tend to agree. We're, we're three-quarters of the way through the year. If we only had two out of nine months where we've gone over, and the other months we've been below, I would, I mean, actuarially, we should be below.
Counselor Rossick?
Yeah, I think we should vote on the MBR tonight. The, uh, the first group of red letter, red numbers here were pretty explicit. I mean, there shouldn't be any reason why the board would have to go through that. And I think you made a good ca, case on the health insurance of, of reducing that. So, I don't see any reason why we should postpone it, because it, when the 9th comes, or the 10th, whenever we do it, we most likely will go the MBR. So, why put it off any longer than we have to?
Could I answer that rhetorical question?
Sure.
Uh, I would recommend that, respectfully, that the council put it off, because I'd really like to have the opportunity. I, I literally, this is the first time, including the chairman, has seen this. Uh, I, I really appreciate having a little bit of time on Monday night to just kind of massage it with the, with the board members. And then, we typically end our COWs at about 8 o'clock. Um, and we could be here and participate in, at the end of your budget session.
And that would work with our schedule? We have a meeting on Monday, April 9th to consider town- We have a meeting on Monday, April 9th to consider town functions. If the council chooses, you can move to postpone this to time-definite Monday, April 9th. And at that point, then, we could take up the account, or if you prefer...
Tuesday, April, oh, I'm sorry.
Or if you prefer, I mean, it's on the agenda for tonight, you can vote it tonight, you can vote it Monday. If it's going to be the MBR, I don't see that it makes a difference what night we vote it, if that is your, if that's your choice.
I think I'll go with your recommendation to wait until, I would go with whatever it is, Monday night, just to give you a chance to look at it as courtesy.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Does Counselor Parker have a preference?
I can go either way.
Okay, so, so far, we have Counselors Zepari and Muravsek that would like to vote tonight, Counselors O'Bree, Atwater, Heed, and myself that would like to wait until the 9th. Counselor Schmidt? Wait until the 9th. So, then, we have a majority that would like to wait. So, at this point, I'll entertain a motion, but please, I'll make the motion. I move that we postpone the vote on account 1080, Board of Education budget, until Monday, April 9th at 6:00 PM at our budget meeting.
So, I moved...
So, I moved that we postpone until Monday, April 9th, seconded by O'Bree. All those in postponing until Monday, April 9th, account 1080, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eight in favor, one opposed, zero abstaining. That would be Muravsek as the opposition.
UFJ.
So, then, we are postponing the vote until Monday, April 9th. At this point, is there further discussion from the council first, please?
I'm sorry, the meeting will be at 6:00.
The meeting begins at 6:00, but we have several other functions we need to get through. There are board members who wish to speak, so, Mr. Right-Law. Thank you, thank you for waiting, I appreciate it.
Just, I'll keep this as quick as I can, and just a quick clarification for those who wonder about the actual cost of the IB program. Again, it's been beaten to death that all these teachers would be teaching other classes, so, the cost of the IB program is approximately $60,000. I've heard much higher numbers out there. Again, I just want to point out that when we first met in January, we were facing a $2.3 million increase in health insurance and benefits, $551,000 in staff increases, so, little, almost $2.9 million. And we worked throughout January, February, and March to bring that down to 1.849. The reason we voted for this number is we felt that this was a reasonable number that did not cut into student services. However, not to disrupt the narrative that was presented earlier tonight, several of us actually did advocate for using the insurance reserve months ago. What we pointed out, and which I think is relevant tonight, is that the number of 1.7 million that we were provided in the insurance reserve was as of July 1st. This is for claims that were closed. This was a 1.7 that, at this point, would not be used. We are, since July 1st of last year, we have been putting more money into the reserve. So, this is not a new idea. This is an idea that we pushed for, but because they were concerned about actuarial concerns, it wasn't moved. They wanted to continue to wait until these final numbers come out. But, the point is that as of July 1st, the claims are in for that fiscal year, and so, if you use a million of that, we've put several hundred thousand back into that account since then. So, I was surprised that this came out as a new idea tonight, because some of us on the board did push for this a long time ago. The only thing new tonight was another $51,500 in savings over the almost million that we already came up with. So, I just wanted that on the record.
Okay, so, that's somewhat reassuring, then, to those of us who were concerned that you had, that the idea had originated with the board to use this money, so that's reassuring.
Well, yeah, because every year, we're expected to budget for some of the excess in the reserve, otherwise, that money just builds up year after year after year. In addition to what's in the reserve, there's a 25% corridor that also cushions for any outstanding, plus, as we've discussed, there's a stop-loss. The other thing I'm concerned about, and I just want to put this on the record quickly, I had moved for an additional $333,000 in OPEB, because our assets in OPEB right now are actually negative, $668,519. Our unfunded accrued liability for the board is $16,458,000, and for, let's see. So, the accrued liability, I'm sorry about that, ours, I'm sorry, is $13,334. The town is $40,291. I felt like we should at least make a payment toward that, at least bring our account at least to zero instead of being negative. I mean, these are the real numbers. I know they're painful, but I just didn't think that we should continue to kick that can down the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any counselors that wanted to say anything else? Otherwise, I think we are set. Counselor O'Bree?
I actually have one...
Can you use the microphone, please? Thank you, Counselor Atwater.
I'm sorry, I had one other question that goes back to your budget. I was wondering, I noticed that you cut the budget for security at the schools. I have a problem with that, with the local, with the culture of the world today. And I was wondering if you could tell me that it's someplace else, or that it's something you did differently?
We did two things, actually, with security. And I'm trying to see if I can find that exact amount. It is... It's on line 93, page 2-3. We had in the budget, we have in the budget this year, $96,000 for security, and it went down slightly. We did two things. One is, there was, there are two full-time security guards, actually, split up between a couple of half positions, but total FTEs is two. For part of the year, our principal asked for an additional half-security guard, so we, I approved that, the board approved that, and then, during the budget cycle, the principal informed me that that person is no longer available, and that we, Heed, Mr. Arcrease, didn't feel the need to fill it. But we also increased the budget, we're picking up a good portion now. We went from $44,000 for the SRO to $59,000, so, we've actually increased the budget, and we are deeply committed to the concept of school resource officer. That person has proved to be really invaluable to the school. So, we're actually investing more, it's in a different line item, more for security.
Okay. Maybe you can, when you have some time, no rush, just show me, you know, one of your magic things you work on during the day.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no further discussion from the counselors, I will take a motion to adjourn to time-definite. That would be Saturday, April 7th at 9:00. Move by Counselor Heed to adjourn to time-definite Saturday, April 7th at 9:00 AM, seconded by Franco. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstaining? We are recessed. So, I will take a motion to recess until Saturday, April 7th. Move by Heed, seconded by Franco. All those in favor of recessing until Saturday, April 7th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Now, we're recessed.